Okay, welcome. And even though you don't look like an Ann. And welcome, Joe. Oh, there's anyone? Okay, so at 6:31, let me call the meeting to order. So first of all, I have no additions or deletions to the agenda unless they'll start yelling at me. And so let's start off at one point for reapproval of the minutes for September the 13th and the 27th. I reviewed both of those and would like to see if there's any comments on those minutes. Do you have anything on those, Carol?
No, I don't have any comments.
All right, Julie?
No comments.
Lori?
No comments.
Does that apply, Carol, to both the minutes of the 13th and the 27th?
Yes.
Same question to you, Julie?
Yes.
And same to you, Lori?
Yes, sir.
All right, if that's, if that's true, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of September the 13th and the 27th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th and September 27th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so let's have a vote. Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori, how did you vote?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes. All right. All right, so let's move on to 3.1, Master Plan Committee update. So Beth, correct me if I'm mistaken, but we have received no update. And Karen Clement basically has commented on an email dated October the 16th that currently that she's not aware of any future planning, master plan committee meetings have been scheduled.
Correct. And that she also added, there is no additional work approved by the master plan committee to send to the planning board. Therefore, there's nothing new that's coming to the office.
All right, so 3.2, Beth, and I'll push this to you. Restricted district bylaw draft amendment. Raiser keeping a fowl in residential districts. Building Commissioner proposed.
Yep, that was in your subfolders. I don't know if you recognize it or not, but it was under 3.2. If you open up that document, there's a recommended wording under, basically under 14526A10A. And there's a couple of sentences in there. That's the recommendation from the building commissioner. And I just wanted to make sure the board saw that and then you can discuss it later with regards to the Fall Town Meeting. Or comment on that or whatever.
So I guess, Beth, I'm, maybe you can help me here. So let me sort of read it to the board members. So our existing bylaw is basically the raising and keeping of a small flock of fowl not to exceed 20. And the building commissioner added the following, excluding roosters. It is the responsibility of the property owner to ensure their flock is sufficiently contained to the subject property. At no time show the animals be permitted to enter abutting parcels or the public way. Failure to comply with this requirement may result in an order to remove the animals. So I remember in the past, we had an issue with free range chickens, basically ranging on someone's property. And that the building commissioner at that time had sort of requested that the existing bylaw was a bit vague and, but failed to, you know, provide us any language. So I guess the only problem I have, and I'll ask selectmen and CHAS to comment on that, would be the comment about excluding roosters. And I don't understand in a right to farm community, how you can discriminate based on the sex of the chickens.
I didn't realize this was part of my job description.
Oh, it's not. I mean, you can basically defer comment on it. But I mean, I guess the concern that I have is, and to take CHAS off the hook. I mean, Beth, my comment would be back to the building commissioner who provided this. How can we discriminate against roosters in a right to farm community? Because my understanding is that, you know, even if I don't particularly care to hear roosters at sunrise, being a right to farm community does not allow me to complain about that nuisance.
Well, there's, there's, being, being of farming background, Lance, I actually have a little bit of knowledge on this. And it's something that I have talked to town council about for other matters. The, the right to farm is really on the, is more on the commercial end of things as opposed to a residential. Now residential area, according to what I'm understanding, would be able, you would be able to delineate, I guess, more restrictions per se, because I'm personally not one to put more restrictions on the homeowner. But in, in our conversations, when I was on the planning board last year, it was that the animals needed to be contained on the individual's property, I think, is what we were all talking about, number one. And number two, if there is a rooster, I mean, especially the noise problem with a rooster. I don't think it has anything to do with the gender of the animal. I think it has to do with the amount of noise that it produces. And having a male that is creating a lot of noise in a residence or community is probably something that, that the planning board could look at to add for a zoning. But I would defer to talking with town council in regards to exactly what, what the regulation would be for it.
Okay. But I thought, you know, I didn't know a rooster made any noises if there weren't any hens around.
Oh, they're pretty loud.
Yeah, they are very loud.
Especially when there's no hens around.
And if you run a half acre lot and you have a rooster next door to you, you can't really get away from the noise.
Right.
One of the documents that it was a minimum of five acres.
And, and that's, that's in the, in that, Carol, I think, is part of what you guys should really be researching, is to define exactly what the current bylaw says. I would suggest looking at other farming communities, there are several, to see what their regulation is. And I do believe, I know that my grandfather was only allowed to have so many on his property and he had, he had a lot of land, but.
I, I think one of the documents that Beth had sent out maybe a week or two ago.
Yeah.
I, I read and I thought I read, I'll have to re-find it and reread it again, but I thought it said in the bylaw that it was five, minimum of five acres, but I'll see if I can find it. I have here in my piles.
All right, so Carol, thank you so much. Would you, would you, I mean, I maybe the prudent thing for us to do is to sort of punt this till our next meeting? And will you have some time to sort of research this in terms of?
Yeah, I should have it here in my pile of paperwork, because I remember just reading it a couple of weeks ago, so I'll do that.
Okay, and would you have a chance to like look at Ashby or Pepperell or Lunenburg and see what they say?
Okay, Ashby.
Yeah, I mean, pick a couple surrounding towns to sort of compare it.
And any, anything I have from town council, I'll send to you, Carol, too, as well.
All right, any, any other comments on any of the board members in terms of our action on this? So Carol's, you know, thank you, Carol, for taking the effort to look into this a little bit further. And then we'll sort of revisit it on our next meeting on November the 8th.
Okay, I just make a note, please, Chairman McNally, the warrant for special town meeting closes November 1st. So just so the board is aware, if there are any thoughts of bringing this up.
Okay, well, our next meeting is the 8th, right, Beth?
Yep.
You know, unless someone from the planning board starts to jump up and down, I don't think that this is an urgent matter that we must get before the town in the next period. All right, so since I don't see anyone jumping up and down, they apparently have no roosters living next to them, but and I'm, you know, usually up before, you know, four o'clock in the morning anyway, so I'm up before the rooster, so they don't bug me. All right. All right, maybe 3.3, Safe Roots to School update, Carol?
Yeah, I attended a meeting on Friday and they talked about the infrastructure funding.
Okay.
Sidewalks and stuff, but I think we've already sent in grants for updating the sidewalks and the walkability. And I'm going to be, I think there's, there's a networking call that I'll be on 10 November that's going to be talking about parents and guardians of children participating in the Safe Roots to School.
Oh, good.
And I'll be talking with Rachel O'Donnell next week.
Okay.
So that's pretty much.
Okay, do you need any help from, from any of us, Carol, right now?
Not right now.
Okay.
Oh, what I'm just saying, I was glad to see on the website, they, they did talk about having the engine, town engineer participate in Safe Roots to School, and I saw that on the town website that they've signed on to that.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Okay, Beth, update on MVP?
No update at this time, other than we may have some, we may have some help in the office through the senior workoff program for a website to be set up for.
Oh, good.
Yeah, for the MVP program and the hazard mitigation plan, so we can get organized.
Okay, 3.5, walkability and bikeability study?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're still waiting on the final report for the walkability study. But I do understand that it is under review at MRPC, so we expect that pretty soon. And the final report for the intersection study of West Elm Canal and, what's the other one? Anyway, that one is, has been delivered. And I think later on, on the agenda, there's a additional under correspondence. I have that report for the board and wanted to know if the board wanted to meet with the author of the study to ask questions and, you know, comment and make comments. So that would be George Snow at MRPC.
I think, I think that would be a good thing to do.
Okay, so I'll set that up and invite Jim Smith from Highway.
Okay.
And then Board Selectman.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, great.
All right, so I see that it's time for our public hearing at 6:45 PM, which is a continuation of the public hearing for Five Turnpike Road. I see that we actually have Smiling Stan Dillis with us.
I'm here.
Great, and it looks like you're in your office in Lunenburg.
That would be correct, Lance.
Okay, so we're convening the public hearing at 6:45. There is a virtual clipboard that is being passed around. And so Beth, do I need people to introduce themselves or do you have it?
I don't have everyone's name. If it's possible, you could just go around and let me know who is attending. That'd be great.
Okay, Joe, if you could introduce yourself?
Sure, Lance, I'm Joe Flynn. I'm in Abada to the property.
Okay, and the gentleman that sort of like has got a last name like my first name, Landzot?
Okay, I don't see him.
Well, he's a good-looking gentleman with all.
Yeah, my name is Ian Ortiz. I'm from, I live on 39 South Street.
Okay, and of course, we have Smiling Stan Dillis. We have Robert Tariad, who has applied as an associate member. We have Charlie, who is, Charlie, why don't you introduce yourself?
Charlie Velay, I'm Abada, Seven Turnpike Road.
Okay, oh, Joe, what is your address? Are you at 12?
21, isn't he?
21?
21.
I'm, I'm at 12 Squanacook.
Okay. All right, so we have Hartley here with TCAM, and then we have Cindy King. So we have a total of 13 participants, Beth. And, you know, with all of the board members, with the exception of Mike.
All right, thank you.
Right, so one thing that, let me just start this straight off. And so, and we met with, and we lost CHAS for some reason, but.
No one here.
Oh, there you are. Gosh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. So site plan review requires a super majority of the planning board. And what that means is that we have a five-member board and four people have to vote in the affirmative. Lori had refused herself right at the onset. And then during our last public hearing, Mike recused himself. So we're like down to three board members, which sort of, you know, put us into a circumstance that I have never, ever been in before. And so CHAS basically was going to meet with our town council. And I had asked CHAS to say, you know, can you sort of talk to Adam and explain, what do we do in this circumstance? And so Adam basically drafted a document at the planning board. And I think CHAS even provided us with some case law, which basically says that if the board requires more members that are currently, you know, they even, you know, we can't hit a super majority unless members recuse themselves. The rule of necessity kicks in. It basically allows us to bring members in that have refused themselves. And so we have a special document that we received from town council, which Mass General Law requires that says we need to invoke the, or the, you know, information about the rules of necessity. So with that, we would like to include Lori as part of our planning board and all. But I would like Lori, first of all, to state what her conflict of interest is, which is required by Mass General Law. You're unmuted, Lori, okay?
I, I'm an owner of units at Country Estates and I'm a trustee. So that, I guess qualifies as a conflict.
Okay, and Lori, do you think that you can objectively participate in this public hearing and evaluation of the plan?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so any questions like Joe or Charlie or any concerns that you have?
Yep, I have a point of order. I, I'd just like to record to state that I object to the appointment of Laurie Schifrin as a voting member based on that necessity law. I've reviewed it and I, I think there's some points of conflict there that go beyond using Lori as an appointment.
I can understand that. I clearly can understand that. You know, I don't speak for the board, but, you know, from the chair, I feel very strongly that if we were to move forward with this, that any of the issues that have been brought up with regards to runoff will be addressed.
I get it, Lance, and I appreciate that and I understand the position that you're in based on that. Just understand that that opens a bunch of other doors for me.
I, I totally, totally understand, Joe. But the, the other position would be that if, if we don't move forward and we basically can't reach a super majority on this, nothing will be done.
Yeah, I, I fully, I fully understand that. And if everything's open and honest, then that's all I'm hoping for.
Yeah, and it will be, Joe, everything will be, you know, everything on this is going to be, you know, disclosed to the public. I mean, it's, it's in these meetings that you're attending.
I trust you.
But I just encourage your participating, participation in these meetings.
Yep, no, I get you. I trust you. I just wanted to make sure that you understood my objection and
I understand it, Joe.
And to keep my options open.
Yep, I understand it. All right, any other concerns? Okay.
You have two hands, Lance. You have one from Cindy King and one from Lori.
Okay, well, let's take Cindy first. Cindy?
I'm there. I just unmuted. I have, I have a couple of questions. One is, I, I could be wrong, but I'm just wondering if in any conversation that anyone had with town council regarding the rule of necessity, which I'm familiar with, as many boards from time to time have had to deal with this problem. I'm just wondering, the question is, on that issue, can, does the rule of necessity allow you to have three members voting on this as opposed to calling in one who is actually an owner of part of the property and a trustee? The second question regard, is regarding Lori, and my question is, is she an applicant in this concern? As a trustee of the property, is she an applicant in what's going on here? Because I can't see any point why, why an applicant would vote against it. So she, you know, that's my, my concern and in opposition to Lori being that additional member. Thank you.
So let me, let me do, let me do the, the first one. I don't know. CHAS, since you did meet with town council, is there anything that you care to comment on that?
Well, according to what town council had explained to me and the documents that I had sent to you, Lance, is that the, it's made up, or the, the vote has to be part of the makeup of the planning board. And the planning board has voting members, a super majority has to be four. So no, it can't be just three to answer that question. As far as when the rule of necessity is invoked, that meant that anybody who has recused themselves would be allowed to vote on it. So it's not just one particular member, it's all the members that have recused themselves. And this, according to town council, is a very rare instance. And in his opinion, to me, this is the first time that he's actually seen it and said that it was a valid situation.
Okay, with regards, so any questions, Cindy, on CHAS's response to your first question?
Um, no, I, I'm sure that that's been, been addressed. And I don't want to keep a conversation back and forth on the, on the issue that he brought up. It's really not, in Townsend, it has not been rare at all. We had a time when we had one selectman as the other two had quit a few years ago and the rule of necessity was done a couple of times a week. But we've had other times where there's been a shortage of, of a quorum in many, on many boards. So it's intact, we haven't had our town council all that long. So maybe he has not had the experience of ruling on the rule of necessity in Townsend. But Townsend, anyone that's been involved with boards and everybody's shaking their head, yes, Lori, that the rule of necessity is a well-known phenomenon here in Townsend.
Okay, now with, with regard to your second question, Cindy, that is Lori, in fact, an applicant. I would have to defer that to legal counsel in terms of, under Mass General Law, is she considered an applicant? I am not an attorney, so I certainly can't comment on that. What I, what I can comment on the fact that we did abide by Mass General Law in terms of having a document sent to the planning board from town council saying basically the, you know, I shouldn't say the permission, but the, the order in terms of a rule of necessity. And basically that, you know, the, a process that the planning board members had to state their conflict of interest. And Beth, did I miss anything there?
No, that was perfect.
All right, so I'm, I really, I'm, you know, I think your second question is more of a legal opinion than what I can offer. All right, okay, so Stan?
Yes.
So you've basically.
Lance, Lance, can you?
Work in terms of coming up with a revised plan?
I think Mr. Flynn has a question.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Yep, I, I just want to point out that I want to ask if a potential conflict of interest has been formed and posted with the board of selectmen on this, because Laura Schifrin has a substantial financial interest in this project.
Can I answer that, Lance?
You can, Lori.
I don't know you, Mr. Flynn, and I don't know what you know about me. So I'm not sure why you're making the accusations. However, I do own, I currently own three units at Country Estates. I am on the board as a volunteer. I've done a lot of work along with other members of the board to try to get the parking lot paved. We've been talking about it for almost 30 years there. So my only hope is that I'm able to offer the history that I have with the Country Estates.
Okay, and I'm going back to the 2003 intervention.
Talk for a second. Answer your question, Lori has filled out a official conflict of interest form that has been filed with the town, and, and Beth, can you confirm that?
Yeah. Yes, there was a conflict of interest form filed with the town clerk. However, I don't know anything about the board of selectmen, a filing with the board of selectmen, so I don't know, but there isn't.
I didn't file with the board of selectmen. I filed the form, right, the conflict of interest form.
We just wanted to answer Joe's question precisely, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, Joe.
No, that, that's okay. If, if the form has been filed, that's fine with me. That answers my question.
Yeah, and it's, it's required by Mass General Law, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, back to Stan.
All right, after the last meeting, there were several issues that were brought up and I'll try to go through them one at a time. The, we've added a line to the plan that's a 300-foot offset from the Squanacook River. And nothing we're proposing is within that 300-foot boundary. There was a question about the flood plain and the flood map, which are 30,000-foot brushstrokes, show the flood plain going through here. But the flood plain is governed by elevation and the elevation of the flood plain at this particular point is elevation 293. You can see by the contours on our plan that we are at, the lowest point we are at is 295. So we're well above the flood plain. We've moved all of the parking away from the back property line of the folks on Squanacook Terrace and moved it to the other side of the parking lot. And after site meeting with Lori and a couple And after site meeting with uh Laurie and a couple of the other trustees, we've concluded that making that stretch of road after the mailboxes and around that loop one way and putting the parking on the inside of that uh, gets it as far away from any, any of Butters as possible. That new parking all slopes away from the property line to a recharge stretch is at the back edge of the parking lot. We're, we're adding a Cape Cod berm from the end of that new parking all the way down and around where those catch basins are and all the way back up to the mailboxes. And we're going to install a grease and trash tra- uh, trap on the, on the furthest downstream catch basin, which is where, where the outfall from all the existing runoff from the parking lot goes. The other thing we've done is we've moved where the dumpster, where the dumpsters are going to go, to the other side of that driveway and added three parking spaces in there. So I think we've, I think we've accommodated all the questions that were brought up at the last meeting. Uh, I think the berm will trap any of the runoff that now goes off of the parking lot and directed into the catch basins where it was originally designed to go. And we're above the floodplain, we're outside the three hundred foot offset from the river. So those, those are the changes we made where actually now, now we're not actually adding very much pavement to that side at all because we're shrinking the, the existing road, which is twenty-five feet wide down to sixteen feet. So um, that, that, those are the changes and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
All right Stan, so I, first of all, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, I don't know Laurie, if you can help me with this one. Um, you know what type of pool filter the um, that you have there at Country Estates?
I do not.
All right, you don't know if it's a sand filter or if it's an earth filter?
I don't, and the actual applicant who is our CPO, the certified pool operator, is not on the call.
Okay, so Stan, is there anything, because I think I recall um, at our very, very first meeting, concerns about when the pool is emptied in the runoff, is there anything in your operations and maintenance plan that takes into account um, water discharge from the pool?
There is not.
Is that something that you could sort of address or find out? I mean, I think that, I, I, I think that if one is to just drain the pool on the parking lot, uh, that appears to me to be an issue.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I was unaware that they did that until we had the first meeting. Perhaps we can look at uh, directing that um, backwash. I believe it's just backwash from the filter, but that could be, I, I will look at some mechanisms there. Perhaps you can put that into a dry well somehow?
Yeah, and, and the reason I was asking Laurie about a filter is that if you have a sand filter on your pool, then it's just basically the water is being, you know, the filter's being backwashed.
Correct.
But they have earth filters where you basically pour in this white powder into your filter that helps um, you know, it's like a fine sand or something, but it's not a sand material.
It's tight, yeah, diatomaceous earth.
Yes, great, I, I was going to embarrass myself trying to pronounce. So depending upon the type of the filter it is, one may have to consider different um, um, runoff strategies, if you know what I mean.
And may, Laurie, you, you can find that out from the pool operator?
Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can get him now, actually, and um, I don't re- I don't remember, I know they backwash, okay, but I don't remember the emptying of a lot of water. The backwash is only thirty seconds.
Yeah, I, 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 as a pool owner, I agree with you Laurie, but if for some reason, um, especially this year when we've gotten a lot of the water, if you get like water over the skimmer on a pool, your skimmer becomes ineffective. So you need to empty water out of your pool so that the swimming functions. So, and then at the end of the season, when you get ready to winterize your pool, you've got to drain it down below the skimmer. So those are the two instances where there can be a significant amount of water coming out of a pool.
So when, when I usually do it, or when you do it, um, don't you have it run like on your lawn? Um, don't you run it on your lawn, or do you put it in a dry well?
Uh, no, I have a sand filter and I put it on my lawn.
Yeah.
But I just, I just think that, um, and because I know you have a pool as well, I just think Stan, that that's something that I think we should check because that can be a lot of water.
Well, I think with a pool of that size, it's different than a, than a twenty-four foot above ground pool. So it could be a significant wa- amount of water and that may be some of the times when Mr. Flynn is getting, getting flooded. If, especially if that water's not.
Addressed in the operations and maintenance plan. Um, I mean, if there's any, does any board member disagree with me? All right, um, the second comment that I have on the operations and maintenance plan is, do you address, and I have not reviewed it, have you, do you address um, snow and snow removal?
No, I, I've been operating under the assumption that they would, the snow would just go where, where they put it now. And I honestly, I do not know where that is. Maybe Laurie can answer that question.
Okay, because I do believe that um, we do need to have, at least in the operations and maintenance plan, um, you know, basically an indication where snow is at. I mean, any other board member comment on that or any of Butters?
We can, we can get an answer to that.
I can, um.
Yeah Laurie.
So when they, they plow, um, there is water that go, there, they do plow past where the fire hydrant is, which is the going around the corner. They don't plow going towards um, Squanah Cook, but they go towards the back of the lot of Country Estates property, and that's on the lawn. And then in, they do the same thing in the resident parking area between the two buildings where it gets plowed again to the back off onto the lawn and the same, as much as they can do going towards the west of the parking lot. So again, there, there's nothing behind those two areas that abut anything close.
Well, I think Stan, uh, based on my twenty-eight years' experience there, uh, plowing that, that's not the issue. They plow off whatever side of the road they happen to be traveling with, with the plow, uh, plowed direction. So there's no, it does not seem to me like there's a plan that redirects snow removal to one particular area. That's just based on twenty-eight years of living with it.
But when this, when the snow piles up and melts, is that when you get some of your runoff problems?
It's not Stan.
It's, it's more, it's more from a heavy rain or the pool.
So my consider, my concern with that would be that I did get a chance to review your revision plans, um, and, and um, the addition of a berm I was really encouraged with. This is what I'm trying to avoid. Uh, I sent everybody, uh, or I sent Beth uh, and uh, pictures of what happens with storm runoff and how it affects my property. And I'm hoping you all get a chance to see those so you know that what I'm dealing with. Um, and my problem uh, with that is the revision was the terminology of a California berm. Because my understanding of a California berm is basically a mound of sand. And a mound of sand is an earthen and there's no sod, so there's no way to, to prevent anything that, that just washes that sand down onto my property. So if you look at the photos I sent you, you, you'll see what uh, the runoff that I deal with, it's not from snow removal, that isn't typically the issue. Typically, the issue is uh, heavy storms, the pool being drained right into the, into the street, that sort of thing.
Okay, if I, if I might, if, what we're proposing is a Cape Cod berm, so it's a curb. It's a, it's a pa- it's a pavement curb, not, it's not sand or anything like that, it's actual.
Oh, okay, I, and then I'm sorry Stan, what I saw was California berm.
Oh, it's Ca- Cape Cod berm.
Which is composed of what?
It's betuminous concrete. It's the same, it's the same material that the parking lot's made of.
Okay, and so is that, is that berm then sotted over so it doesn't become part of the runoff?
No, it's, it's just like a curb on a ro- on, you'd see on a road. That they got over a road, it's, it's a curb.
Oh, curb, okay, yep, I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
All right, listen, you learn something every day. I didn't know the difference between a Californian and a Cape Cod berm?
I, I'm not, I don't know what, I don't know California berm, I'm, I'm a east coast person.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thought, I, I thought that's what I saw on the plan.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a sloped paved berm and it's, it's, it's sotted behind it. But it's designed to, it's a very typical standard engineering practice to direct runoff where you want to.
Okay, so I think that goes away toward.
Catch basins.
I think that goes away, a long way toward uh, resolving that runoff concern for me.
So um, Stan, you think it makes sense that um, given that we've had a lot of climate change, um, that, you know, if there needs to be any um, piling of snow, that there's a designated area for it and it's part of the operations and maintenance plan?
Oh, we could come up with an area of that, sure.
I mean.
Since we have a couple of other tasks.
Think ahead in terms of um, you know, things that we need to address like pool runoff and snow stockpiling?
We can look at, we can certainly look at that and I think from what Mr. Flynn has said and from what Laurie's saying, I think, I think if um, you know, off the end of the parking lot there is probably an acceptable place, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay, um, Beth, um, have, uh, I assume if you haven't, can you guide Stan with the photographs that Mr. Flynn has put in? And Joe?
Lance?
Yes.
The, it's a sand filter.
Okay.
That we use and it um, currently goes when they do any runoff from that, or emptying from that, it goes right behind the shed down and there's, I don't know, thirty, thirty feet anyway, thirty or forty feet that it's running on um, porous, you know, sand before it hits the pavement.
Okay, because, because of the earth filter, that needs to sort of be put into a sump to capture all that, the word I can't pronounce, earth that Stan mentioned.
Well, whatever, whatever Stan recommends will be fine with um.
Okay, so I think, all right, um, all right, any other questions from any other of the board members? All right, um, comments from Abutters, Charlie?
Um, as far as snow removal, they do put, plow the snow right up towards my property, the back of my property. And one year was, it was as high as the top of my garage. So they're moving thirty-five to almost forty feet, which would put rate, would be right up to the back of my garage. So the, so the, the parking lot is going to be within five feet of my boundary line. And the snow, if they, if they then push the snow, it would be, it would be in my yard. Uh, so if you could have the snow moved somewhere, I don't know, I don't know where, but I, I don't care either, as long as it's not on my property line.
We, we can designate that as a no, no snow storage area?
Okay, and Stan, so Charlie is on seven term pipe?
Correct.
Okay, any, uh, Charlie, I see your hand is still up.
Oh, I don't know how to put it down, but.
Okay, well, do you have any other comments?
Uh, well, yes, the uh, these, the plan I looked at, um, there was a right-of-way, which is my neighbors around the property, and I measured from the back of my garage to the parking lot and it's forty feet. And if, if the parking spot spaces are going to be nine feet, I measured the ones in the parking lot now, if, if they're going to be nine feet, that, that's thirty-six plus a drainage, um, you're, you're right up against my property line, which is, is the back of the garage. So I don't know if that's apprope- I, I don't think it's appropriate to be that close. I mean, somebody opens their door, they're gonna get out of the car, they'll be stepping on my lawn, uh, my, back of my house, but. Um, so I don't know how close you're gonna come to the property line, I don't know what the surveying thing is, uh, anyway, I would, I would like, I don't know, ten feet or fifteen feet before my property lines where there's no tar or anything. But I don't know what, what the rules are or anything else.
I think Charlie, by the uh, zoning by law, uh, we need to just be five feet off the property line, but we'll take a look at that and see if we can move, move something of one way or another to give you a little more room back there. I, I, I get your concern there, it is close to your property line.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, well, Beth has got her hand up and so she's, you know, number one.
Um, two things, do you want me to share the revised site plan for the meeting? And do you, you want me to read the mandatory referrals that were received? Are you getting to that?
Yes, I'm going to be getting to that.
Okay, do you want me to share the, the plan?
Let me just find out what Joe has to say before that.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, thanks Lance. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that the photographs that I submitted with the uh, the state, federal and local regulations that I cited, uh, didn't go out to everybody. If that didn't happen, but the elephant in the room is that the primary source of discharge um, for, for stormwater management at that site is squarely within the A C E C of the, of the Squanah Cook River. Uh, we, we had a walkthrough with the previous conservation agent. Um, I pointed it out, uh, and, and it, the um, three hundred feet from the high water mark of the Squanah Cook River, all this stormwater comes out in an open culvert directly behind my property. And I've submitted pictures that I hope that you would have an opportunity to review that, that shows you the impact on my property. But um, the, the bottom line is that that primary source of discharge is an open culvert within the Squanah Cook River A C E C. And, and that makes it come under federal, state and local bylaws that require um, Mast D E P best management practice, um, notice of intent and, and uh, the opportunity for me to redress grievances. So I'm not opposed to them expanding their parking lot, but if you had an opportunity to see what I've dealt with, with them, which I sent, um, as well as the specific regulations that the state, the federal government and the local bylaws, the Squanah, Squanitisit uh, act require and who's responsible. I believe that there is uh, Mast D E P permitting required here. I believe that there's uh, the, the submission of a best management practice and notice of intent. I believe that there's, uh, the, the submission of a best management practice and notice of intent for maintaining that area. I'm just trying to protect my property. Um, it, it, if you'd like me to share those photographs with you now, I'd be happy to do it. Um, but, but significant-
Don't, don't worry, the elephant in the room will be addressed.
Okay, um, I ju- I just really wanted on record that, that everybody I've talked to and, and maybe I'm, I'm prejudging here. But that PSD for the, uh, um, the stormwater discharge is squarely within that A C E C.
Okay.
Uh, you mentioned at the last meeting that you wanted, um, distances from that A C E C. And I haven't, I haven't seen anybody, uh, present those. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be a jerk here.
No, 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 not.
I respect everybody's ability to, to manage their property. But when it all dumps onto my property, um, I, I, I take some issue. And so I, I am being careful there to dot my i's and cross my t's that, um, you're aware that that PSD, uh, PSD is squarely within three hundred feet of the Squanah Cook River. And, and that brings in a whole lot of characteristics and requirements that I haven't seen anyone address.
Okay, a, a point taken. Um, um, just one comment in terms of when you send in information, Joe, um, like the photographs that you have, we make that a matter of public record at a planning board meeting. What we don't want to do is to get, and correct me if I'm wrong, Beth. What we want to do is to make sure that anything that is received by us is, everyone is made aware of it. And by, if we were to go ahead and try to disclose it prior to the meeting, we could be missing someone. Like, you know, we wouldn't have known to send it to Charlie, for example. And so that's, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but that's usually our practice is anything that you, any, anyone puts in is a matter of public record, but it's made public at a planning board meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's perfect, Lance. I agree with that. I just want to make sure that what I did send to Beth, um, it is part of the public record.
Yes, it is. What, okay, Lori, you had your hip up.
I, I think.
I think, I've had it up, I've had it down. I, I, I don't know. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, I'll put my hand up in re- in real time.
Okay.
What I suggest is, uh, even if I saw those pictures now, I wouldn't really be able to address them adequately. I'd like to see those pictures. It's obviously a pre-existing condition that we've gone out of our way to not exacerbate. But I'd like to take a look at them and maybe there's something we can come up with that will help, um, fix that situation for Mr. Flynn. I'm not, I, not knowing what's going on on his property, when I see the photographs, maybe I'll get a better idea. But I don't think I could actually address those right at this point in time.
Yeah, and I understand that completely, Stan. But you're, there, there's a proposal here that's effectively going to double the parking lot space. And that is effectively going to double the amount of water that's discharged into that A C E C.
Well, that's, that's, that's not a hundred percent true. We're, we're recharging the water directly into the ground through a recharge trench. It's not, it's not going into the existing drainage system.
Okay, it is going into the, some of it's going into the, uh, uh, existing drain system. Lance, and the, the, uh, the, the federal and state laws for stormwater management are clear that it doesn't say if fifty percent of this changes, then it requires N O Y in D E P. It says if any change affects it.
All right, so Joe, just, just hang on to that thought for a while. And I believe that, uh, your concern will be addressed, uh, before the night is over, okay? Um, all right, um, any other comments from a butters before we read the mandatory referrals? Okay, are you up for that, Beth? You're on mute, Beth, just so you know.
Yep, just one moment, please. I'm sorry.
Lance, if I could just, before Beth reads those, I haven't seen any of the, the latest comments myself.
Um, okay, you will hear about them tonight.
Right, right. I won't be, necessarily be prepared to answer any of those comments.
Correct, and, and we're not going to put you on the spot, Stan.
Okay, just wanted to-
These comments are on the revised, um, site plan and the operation and maintenance, uh, manual that was submitted, the two items submitted by the applicant for this hearing. Um, comment from the, uh, building commissioner, Eric Chartrand. I'm interested in reviewing the peer review. Other than that, I have no concerns at this time. This next one is from the fire chief, interim fire chief. Is the turning radius at the edge of the long drive, at the end of the long drive, paint on or Cape Cod berm? As long as the ladder truck can turn? Okay, and, uh, the next one is from the Conservation Commission. Um, the comment is, Conservation recommends to consider tree slash shrub plantings in areas susceptible to runoff. Parentheses, E G, a vegetative barrier in northeastern corner or site around existing contour two ninety-eight. And parentheses, inclusion of gravel infiltration ditch near vegetation may help collect and slow surface runoff. And then one more just received from the Board of Selectmen. Please ensure the stormwater management plan is adequate and addresses the concerns of Squanah Cook Terrace residents. Please follow bylaws with respect to parking lot plantings. And that's from the Board of Selectmen, and that's, that's all.
Okay. Any comments from any board members or anyone regards to the referrals? Okay, as a next step, um, and this is from the chair, so this isn't, you know, from the board. But, um, I believe, given the history that we have here, that, um, we should, and we talked about this, I think during our first meeting, that I would like to see a peer review done on this plan with respect to drainage and to respect to D E P regulations. Um, and so Beth has proactively gone out and is waiting some responses from some peer review engineers. So that we have someone who is, has expertise that I certainly don't have in terms of reviewing this plan for runoff and compliance with regulation. And so, you know, I think that, you know, and, and typically what happens to those of you that are new on the board is that the peer review engineer, um, will actually go off, um, review all of these plans and then come back to the board. Uh, well, I should say, come back to a planning board meeting and basically provide, um, thumbs up, thumbs down, recommendations. Um, but I think that, uh, I would feel comfortable, given, um, the issues that we had, uh, to sort of have a, um, uh, peer review done on this. Um, Carol, your thoughts?
Sorry about that. No, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, Julie?
Hi, I agree totally.
Okay, um, and Lori?
I'll comment.
Okay, um, all right, so, um, yes, Beth?
Um.
Uh, you're on mute, Beth.
There is one more comment that was sent into the planning board office, um, and it was sent via email. It says, comment for Townsend Planning Board Country Estates paving hearing on ten eighteen twenty twenty-one from Susan Teachout. Do you want me to read it or?
Um, can you just sort of hold that one and, uh, I will have you read it, so it's in the record. But, um, um, so Carol, um, uh, or I should say, can I have a motion that, um, we should, um, have Beth, um, pursue, um, estimates for, uh, peer review engineer? Um, so that we can basically make a, uh, uh, decision, Stan?
Could I ask that, um, feel free to get estimates, but before you send the plan out, let us take a look at the information that Mr. Flynn has and make sure we don't feel like we need to make any changes before it goes out to peer review? That way, that way it's not going back and forth and back and forth, what would be said.
Yeah, that's more than fair. We don't want to go back and forth, back and forth. Um, I mean, I am sensitive to not put applicants through a, um, money churn, if you know what I mean.
Stan, I'm, I'm, Stan, I'm open to that. And, and what I, I, I don't want to, um, hold up your plan, that type of thing. I'm trying to protect my property. If you'd be, if you'd like to get me your contact information, I'll send you what, like the photographs and my concerns.
You know what, Joe? Let's just have Beth send it to him. And then that way, um, you know, it's, it's all above board.
Okay, and everybody's looking at the same thing.
Sure. Yep, no, it's good. I just want you to have that information.
And Beth will not go out and get any final quotes until she's got all the information from you, Stan.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I would prefer.
Okay, and I think that's, that's more than fair. Um, so could I have a motion that, um, we authorize Beth to actually go out and get, um, quotes from peer review engineers with the latest plans from Stan when he provides them?
I'll make a motion to have Beth, uh, go out and get quotes for, um, estimates for a peer view of, uh, the, uh, what is it? The stormwater operation and maintenance manuals?
Well, I would call it, I would, I would just make it the drainage, the drainage quote project.
Okay, drainage of the, okay, backup. Um, I'll make a motion for Beth to receive quotes or estimates for a peer review for an engineer to, um, review the drainage for the, uh, turnpike, um, condominiums, five turnpike road site plan.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, how do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lance, yes, and Lori? Okay, all right, um, all right, um, so with that, um, Joe, question?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to include something that has somebody come out and measure from the high water mark to that primary source discharge culvert that, that, uh, shows that this is within the, uh, A C E C of the Squanah Cook River, because that brings a lot of different, uh, criteria into play.
Oh, so Joe, I am confident that the peer review engineer will do an appropriate job. But you will be the one that is going to hear the peer review engineer's comments on this. And this is done in the public, so you can ask any questions that you have with that peer review engineer or any concerns that you have, and any citizen can do that.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, so this isn't going to be something that's between the planning board and the applicant. Um, it's, it's certainly going to be in the public domain.
Works for me.
Um, Beth, um, do you want to review the, um, one additional a butters comments, so it's on the record?
Sure. All right. So, okay, so, uh, this was received Friday, uh, on the fifteenth from Susan Teachout. Uh, the demographics of country estates condominiums does not justify the need for any more parking spaces. A majority of residents are senior citizens or single residents approaching retirement. Most of these are owner slash residents. A small number of each building are single mothers with one or two children. They are tenants. I'm aware of two units in building number one and two units in building number three that have more than one vehicle. I'm not aware of any in building number two that have more than one vehicle. Can't be more than two or three in that building that I've missed. The town of Townsend and the surrounding job opportunities do not appear now or in the future to attract younger working couples with two vehicles to live in these condos. On any given night, there are at least twenty-five empty spaces throughout the night. Twenty are in the lot beside building one. This has been constant for the fourteen years I've lived here. For the, the past month, I've watched at night the lot beside building two to see if anyone has a problem finding a space. Even the two vehicles that regularly enter after eleven P M drive right into a spot, no problems for them. During the day, there are numerous empty spaces in all lots. Recently, all the bushes, including two areas of spreading evergreens, were removed from both sides of building one. These bushes were replaced in the front corner of building number one with one small flowering, parentheses, someday shrub. The diverters at the end of the gutters on the driveway side of this building were not replaced when the new landscaping was done. Since then, water from the middle gutter has washed away the soil to expose the French drain that was installed a number of years ago because adjacent units flooded. A living room wall in unit number one fifteen had to be replaced several years ago because of rot from water seepage from the outside drain. Outside diverter, outside diverter for unit one fifteen was rarely in place then. Now diverter has been completely removed. Certainly, all this new paving will eliminate grassy areas in the front area of building number one. In the front of building number one parking lot, in the circle by building number three, front lawn, three large pines were removed within last couple of years. And at two sides of the center island along the driveway and in front of building number two. Earlier plans said that one tree would be removed. Is that one of the trees at the entry of Turnpike Road? What about the red maple or the pine trees in front of building number two? If not the whole trees, what about the roots? The excavation for the new spaces along the right-of-way to nine turnpike road will involve cutting branches, if not the large trees, most belonging to neighbors. Long will these trees in the right-of-way and/or belonging to the neighbors survive? Certainly will affect the roots of several trees. The trees don't flourish without good roots. The new recharge trenches in this area appear on the plan to be in the right-of-way to nine turnpike road. I don't see any plan for replanting only unnecessary paving. Moving the dumpsters next to the leach field on the front lawn of building number three appears to me to be a problem. Besides being an eyesore, they will affect, will they affect the leach field? The septic tanks and leach fields for building number one and building number two have been replaced within the past thirteen years. The septic tanks and leach field at building number three will have to be replaced one day, probably sooner rather than later. Should the dumpsters be in that area? Thirteen years ago, when the new tanks and leach field were constructed for building number one, a stump grinder was hired to remove stumps along the driveway side of building number three and across at the end of the swimming pool. One red maple had been planted to replace those trees. Recently, a huge stump was ground at the end of the basketball court. One new tree or shrub does not replace what has been removed. I'm not convinced that the recharge trenches and other drainage systems will protect the Squanah Cook River or the leach fields on Squanah Cook Terrace or at seven and nine turnpike road. Since the spaces on the driveway side of the island are on a significant slope, I see the drainage from snow and rain being a problem for country estates, the Squanah Cook River and Squanah Cook Terrace homes. The proposed spaces across from the front of building number two are also on a slope. I foresee similar problems there. There are pine trees, a red maple and a un- There are pine trees, a red maple, and a unitill ground transformer on that side. What stays and what is removed? The water pipe between the two hydrants, one on the sloped hillside on the swimming pool island, the other on the lawn side of building two, is underground on the hillside next to the new planned spaces on the one-way driveway. Will excavation be close to that water line? Will the pipe be exposed enough in the winter to freeze? Will firefighters have to navigate parked vehicles to run their hoses? If firefighters needed to use these hydrants to fight a fire on Squanah Cook Terrace, would parked vehicles and peed them? Majority of the new parking spaces, about fire lanes? Are unnecessary paved areas more important than access for fire, police, and ambulance? Where is the snow going to go? Most of us who live here would like to keep the country in Country Estates. We choose not to move to city pavement. Plant trees and keep grass and reject unnecessary pavement. Keep us safe and healthy. Thank you for your efforts to keep Townsend a pleasant place to live. And that's the end.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Okay, unless anyone has any objections, I think we know where we have to go forward on this. Oh, is your hand up, Lori?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just like to say that there is no unit 115 at Country Estates. I would hope that you're reading comments of people into record that are not necessarily true. There was no flooding of a 115 in building one. We did remove bushes this summer. We went through a landscaping thing. And we ended up putting gravel rocks rather than mulch or whatnot in the front of all three buildings and the rear of all three buildings. The reason why bushes were removed to the side, and there's three sides that have no bushes and then three sides that did. And they were way too close, had not been maintained, way too close to the buildings, causing moss on the buildings, which we are now going through the power washing of moss. And that also is not healthy for the grout in the bricks. So, um.
Okay.
I just want to say there's another side to the story.
There's always another side to every story, Lori, okay?
I would take this at face value.
Okay, with that, unless there's any other comments, I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until November the 8th. Stan, is that all right with you?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on five Turnpike Road to November 8th.
Yeah, and I should basically say a time at 6:45 PM?
At 6:45 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance is yes. All right, I lost Beth. Are you there, Beth? Okay.
Yes, I am here. Is that enough time to have the peer review, et cetera? I mean.
I think, I think that what we have to do at that meeting is I think that we first of all have to receive from Stan sort of an updated plan after. We need to have Stan look at the additional information that was submitted so that he's comfortable with the plan that we're going to have quoted by peer review engineers. And I think the objective of that meeting is going to be able for the board to pick a peer review engineer. I don't, you know, because I don't see that, since we don't have any, any quotes from any peer review engineers, the board is in the position to pick one right now.
Well, I do have one. It did come in late today, so it wasn't, I'm sure the board didn't have a chance to review it. But there is, there is one, okay.
And there's, is there another one coming?
I did expect another one, but I haven't, I did expect it to come in, so, but it hasn't.
All right. So that's what I expect us to do at our next meeting. That's not going to be, you know, a whole lot, all right. Okay, with that, then we're running late, but I just see that Stan's the only one here, I think, to address it. And that's an ANR for 160, 180, and 198 North End Road?
Correct.
Standing is that you dropped off a revised application today?
I did, and I just want to apologize to Beth for being a little bit cranky about that the other day. So, sorry, that was, that was me, not you. But I did drop off the form, which Townsend is the only town where I have to stamp and sign the form, and I forget pretty religiously, forgive me, but you have the updated form. It's an A, I don't know if, if you can share that or not, Beth, but.
I can, yeah, slightly would you allow me to share?
While Beth's getting that up, there's three existing lots on North End Road that have a rather strange configuration to them, and how they got that way, I don't know. Somebody has bought all three of those lots and they've asked me to just reconfigure them to, to kind of make them more rectangular, so that if in the future they decided to sell one of them, it wouldn't become a problem because they have horse corrals there and a couple of run-in shelters for horses and so forth. And in my doing that, I discovered that one of those three lots actually didn't conform to zoning. So I've created a little parcel from the abutter, which has agreed to do that, to fix that lot. On one of those three lots, there's the previous owner, who the current owner just bought it last month. So we discovered that there's a shed, it's one of those tent-type structures that was only two feet off the property line. So Kevin Smith is the abutter on the other side. He's agreed to do a parcel swap with the folks to fix that. And then the other side is Grandview Farm, and they're cutting off one lot that's going to go to one of the owner's sisters. And there's a fifth lot, which is just the remaining land of Grandview Farm. So I don't know if I explain that without a picture well enough.
I haven't been able to get ahold of Hartley to screen share, to allow me to screen share.
Hold on, Beth, I don't think we need to screen share this.
Uh, excuse me, Beth, I did give you the power to screen share earlier.
All right, yeah, don't, so let's not, let's not screen share. So, and you know our process, you drop off, and you know, when we get an application, Beth sort of goes through it, dots all the i's, crosses all the t's with you before it goes before the board.
Yep.
So I don't, you know, I don't see how we can do that tonight on this? Because she hasn't been able to go through it.
Go through the plan or the application?
All of the above. Is that true, Beth?
I thought it was the plan.
Yeah.
So, so we're not going to be able to take that up until later? That's all right with you?
Um, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why, but it is what it is.
Do you have a CD? Did you, did you drop off a CD?
I don't have a CD. I dropped off the thumb drive. I have no way to make a CD.
Did drop off, okay. Yeah, I haven't been in today, I wasn't feeling well. But no, I haven't, I haven't been able to go through the checklist on this. I couldn't, you know, advise the board to approve it.
It is what it is.
Okay.
I can't, I can't make you do something you don't want to do.
Well, I mean, it's just basically, you know, Beth spends a lot of time going through the checklist on the application, on the drawings with herself and Eric, and then, you know, comes to the board, and we just rubber stamp it typically.
Right, no, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, we could, you know, spend over an hour probably going over it right now, but I, you know, it's just not, you know, how we have been operating.
Right, no, and it's that, you know, it's, there's no, there's no drop dead date on this, I don't believe, so.
Okay.
For the owners, that I think they're, they're fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, let's, let's see, I think, Beth, unless I'm wrong, we're at 3.6, is that true?
Uh, I've got to go back to the agenda, sorry. Let's see.
We did the Thompson Walkability, and the next one was Planning Board Stormwater Authority?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to defer that to the next meeting, if that's okay?
I was going to say that, I had little notes there, but yeah, we'll defer that November the 8th. All right, so 3.7, Massachusetts MJTC update? And MJTC updates, Lori and Beth?
Lori, you want to go ahead?
I can't seem to get to the agenda.
Oh, it's just a, if there is a update from MRPC at all? Or have there been meetings or anything?
Yeah, we've had a meeting, there really isn't anything, um, there really isn't anything to update. Things are still being finalized, but that brings me to the question about our master plan. And how long are we going to allow this to go on? This is not helping. Are they going to step down? If they're not setting any other meetings, are they stepping down? Are we going to get another group together? This?
So Lori, I'm actively addressing this, okay? I agree with you 100%. This cannot, the current status cannot perpetuate, okay?
Okay, um, yeah, so that's all I have on that. I'm trying to look at the, before you go to notices.
No, we still have other stuff on the agenda.
Okay.
And I'll sort of read, read it for you, Lori, so you know what it's going to be, okay?
Okay.
Beth, any update on transportation?
Uh, yeah, there was a meeting last Wednesday. And they had Rachel, actually, from Safe Roots to School do a presentation. And she gave an update on what towns are doing. And unfortunately, Townsend hasn't done much in the scheme of things. So we're hoping to become a little more active and involved on that front. The various activities that are offered through the state and the various programs that are offered through the state. Now, they do, I don't know, Carol, if you've been able to review any of the programming that Safe Roots to School has, the bike rodeos and safety programs, et cetera?
No, but I'm supposed to be having a meeting with Rachel this week.
Oh, great, great, okay, so that was.
Whatever some of that stuff is.
So that, that would be great, you know, we'll get, we'll get Townsend, you know, get it, get that going. What else was there at the meeting? Oh, there was a little bit of, oh, the tip program will be coming up again, so. Oh, what was it? Wait a minute, oh, I'm trying to remember. Sherry Bean had prepared something for Shirley. I think it was a, oh, yeah, Complete Streets. Basically, a priority report for Complete Streets, so she presented that. Townsend already has that complete. So the next step for Townsend is going to be to look at applying for a grant, and that would be around the January, February timeframe. And that would be, we'll kind of tie into our work for the ADA program. There's, there's some grants going, being submitted or has been submit, submitted for an update to our ADA program. And I think that's it. It was a pretty good meeting, but I will, what I'll do is I'll send the agenda around to everybody so they can review and ask the questions if they have them.
Okay. 3.8, public hearings for special town meeting. I'm, yep, I'm not, Beth, I'm not currently aware that we're going to have anything for that special town meeting? Board members want to interject? Okay, 4.1, so I am very, very pleased to see Robert Tarian here. And Robert has submitted an application for an associate planning board member. So I thought I'd give Robert an opportunity to sort of introduce himself and let us know why he's interested in becoming part of the planning board?
Thank you. Well, I grew up in Townsend, and I'm a registered architect. I've been in practice over 40 years. I've been before numerous planning boards and zoning boards. And so I have a broad exposure to a lot of various topics and witnessed how things were resolved and had an opportunity to, to come up. And, you know, being participants and on my client's basis, I see a lot of things, get more aware about what community needs are and things. So I think I could have a good perspective. And I've been, I've been following your whole meeting tonight. And I have to give you accolades because a very comprehensive hearing and very interesting people that are generally sincere. Some of the comments that you made yourself really impressed me about, you know, explaining things as properly and fairly as possible. And so I've observed this, and I've observed the comments here and the respect that you have for the applicants and everything. So it's something I would really enjoy doing. And hopefully I can contribute. Only in terms of wisdom from other hearings that I've experienced. And, and again, I've been blessed with the Pollyanna childhood I had in this town. And I do want to, I want to try to do what I can do in terms of offering suggestions and recommendations or comments to try to preserve that. And I think Townsend itself has done a very good job to, you know, based on the people involved and their dedication. So I, I welcome the opportunity and hope that you'll find my participation beneficial and useful to you. So I don't know what else to say to you, but.
Well, Robert, I first of all want to really thank you for volunteering. I mean, it's a lot of work, and the pay is not that good. So we have, we're blessed, Robert, that we just had received just recently another applicant for the associate board member. And they could not, they couldn't make this meeting because of such short notice. So we defer our decision as a board until our next meeting and on the 8th. So if you could please join us then, if you would like to. I would ask if the other board members have any question for Robert?
Yeah, to ask me something, no, yeah.
Anything for Robert, Carol?
No, no, I don't have anything.
All right.
Nothing.
Okay, Lori?
No, I don't. I think the third applicant is actually on our meeting tonight.
We have to, we need to have an official application before we can actually consider someone, correct?
Should have been received last Thursday.
There are two applications right now, not three.
All right, so we can follow up with that, Lori, on the side, okay?
Okay.
All right, well, once again, Robert, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And, you know, you don't know how hard it is to find, you know, good people like yourself to help this town out on the planning boards. I really appreciate it. So, okay, with that, let me move on. So we're going to take this up again on November the 8th. 4.2, final report on Canal Street? Beth, I think that's you?
That is in the folder of each one of the board members. So you, you have it under 4.2 in your shared folders. I would just ask that you review it and jot down any questions, comments that you might have for MRPC. And then we'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and plan a meeting. I don't know if you'd all like to attend or if you just want to have one or two of you attend a meeting with Mr. George Snow, who was the author, well, the primary project. Um, well, the primary project uh lead on this.
When do you need comments by?
Well, uh. There, I guess it would be wise to send them as you have them and I can, because Mr. Snow would like to see the questions and comments before the meeting. So that he can prepare response. So if you have a chance, I mean, probably just put uh. An end date of the end of the week. Would that, is that reasonable for everybody? And then we can set a meeting date for sometime next week.
Okay, all right, so we'll all make sure that we provide you with comments before the end of the week.
Okay, great, and you'll have it, you have it in your folder, so.
Yes.
I I don't, it's fifty-six pages long, but I mean, it's very technical, so really Jim Smith is going to be the one that really. Digs into it, but you know, just your primary impressions would be great.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, Unitil Gas Emergency Preparedness and responsiveness invitation.
Okay, did I actually put that in your folders? I may not have. That is um an exercise. Run by Unitil every year. Um, it's a simulated emergency and it is online this year. And I'm sorry I didn't put that in your folders. Um, I can update anyone who's interested. It's usually in the middle of the day. It's primarily for emergency response.
Yeah, so my question was, has our emergency, our first responders in terms of fire and highway and um. Um, law enforcement been invited to it?
Yes, um, I would, I will follow up and just make sure they all were invited, but um generally the Board of Selectmen are invited. Anybody who's involved in an emergency in town, so. Uh, I, I mean, I can't, I can't verify that they've all been invited, but the planning board did receive.
Yeah, I get one of these every single year. I have yet to go to one of them.
Okay, well, I'll go. I have no problem.
I don't, you know.
This one is cybersecurity, I'm I'm pretty sure, so definitely a good one to attend, and they're short, they're like an hour. But anyway. That's that.
All right, um. All right, um memo to the planning board from the Board of Selectmen, special town meeting, December fourteenth.
Yeah, again, there uh this, the special town meeting uh is, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, December fourteenth. Um, at seven P M. in Memorial Hall. Uh, apparently it's indoors, okay?
Okay.
Interesting. All right, so then uh the warrant is closing, as I said before, at four o'clock on November first.
Yep.
And that's, that's.
Do you want it? Uh, is there anything that you want to make the planning board aware of or anything?
I don't know, not, nothing today.
All right. Um, all right, uh, all right, uh. Uh, Beth, on Campbell Farm, the O S P D, um, make sure to give us a quick update on that.
Oh, yeah, uh, we did go out, uh, Eric, um, Jessica, myself, a bunch of us went out, conservation went out. To uh do a site inspection and um basically there is a stop work on the. Uh, fire pond at Six Ball Road. Uh, basically, they are um. They were dewatering the pond and that was without, outside of the scope of the order conditions. Um, then uh during the site walk, we went over to the uh. To the main project and um we did note the number, not too, too many things, but we did note. That there was um, a, basically there were two culverts that were required on the plan and only one was installed. There was some issues with erosion control that the applicant was made aware of. And there was also, they hadn't finished installing or they hadn't started installing the markers for the open space. So a couple of, a couple of things that were discussed with the applicant, so they are aware of it. Uh, Stan Ellis was also there. Uh, we, and the board did receive an update and it's in your folders, uh, of work completed at Campbell Farm from the applicant. Which is just a bullet list of some of the things that have already taken place. Um. And there also is in your folders, uh, a site report from. Uh, Jessica, the conservation agent, so you can review that. Um, the one thing I did want to just note is that uh the building commissioner. Did speak with uh the fire department about the fire pond apparatus. And originally, apparently. There was no um. There was no plan submitted, so uh Eric is actually Captain Grimley is asking for plans for the project. Um, to be brought to the fire department. Uh, those of you who are on the original permitting, remember that it was either or. Uh, the fire pond or the applicant would install a twenty thousand gallon cistern. For um water supply for in case of a fire. So there's a little, there's a missing step there. Uh, it is being, everything is being addressed and we're, we're planning another site visit out there. To keep, you know, keep an eye on progress and and whatnot. So that's that.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? Okay, um, four point six, the mask policy. Um, so um during the last um meeting of the health department. Um. Which um I attended, so I'll report on this firsthand. So the health department has. Um mandated um wearing of masks while in town hall. Um, so if you do to go to town hall, make sure you have a mask. Um, there is an exemption for someone that is working in an office by themselves. Um, but that person should still have a mask and if someone should come into their office, then the expectation is that everyone will be masked. Um, I don't know, that's um my understanding of the policy from the Board of Health.
Can I add a two cents there?
Yes.
Um, it's not a mandate the Board of Health recommended. And um the town, the interim town administrator. Um, initiated the order. The selectmen will be taking it up tomorrow in our meeting and we'll probably just keep, keep it the regulation there.
Okay, I'm sorry that I I. Made that too strong, Chaz.
Yeah.
So, okay, um, all right, so Beth, notes from other towns, from Townsend and other towns?
Yep, uh, there's, let's see, the memo that we just talked about for special town meeting. Um, the zoning board of appeals has a public hearing legal notice posted for Wednesday, November seventeenth. At five forty-five, you'll be getting a referral for this project. Um, this is an application of J Smart Contracting for the property located at eight Jeff's Street. For an appeal of the building commissioner's decision dated August twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Under one forty-five, under section one forty-five sixty-four, appealing the finding which states the applicant is in violation of section. One forty-five twenty-seven for a use that is not permitted in the downtown commercial district. And or special permit under section one forty-five sixty-five F. And section one forty-five eighteen of the zoning bylaw. Seeking a positive finding under M G L, chapter forty-eight, section six. For a change of use of illegal pre-existing non-conforming use. And then basically there's information on how to. Go ahead and join the meeting. That's November seventeenth. Uh, you, the board received a notice of decision and a decision for an appeal uh from the Z B A. Appeal of the building commissioner's decision of July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one regarding the Hannaford Building located at eighteen Main Street. To allow for a total of three signs affixed to the Hannaford Building where one was permitted. That decision is in your folder. And the next one is also a notice of decision. For a special permit for the property located at two oh three Main Street. A pre-existing non-conforming structure to allow for the construction of a deck according to the submitted plans. And the rest of the um. Notices from other towns, I apologize, I'm going to email them to you separately. Cause I usually wait till the last minute before I put them all and compile them and today I wasn't at work, so I apologize. I'll send them all. And that's it.
Um, all right, just spent a long night. Um, with that, um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, uh, Lori, how do you vote? You're muted, Lori.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Carol?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, everyone, have a uh a great, a great evening. What's left of it?
Thank you.
Bye now.
Thank you.
And enjoy your, your chicken, Cindy.